Wednesday, January 8th, 2020. Thank you for being here. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we have our citizen input, I just wanted to have everyone please say a prayer today so that Ashley's son, Aaron, maybe may get the call from St. Jude's. I think it's really important, the more people that are praying, the more power we have. And if everyone prays for that, it will be a miracle. So, thank you, Ashley, for sharing that.
Thank you.
We have citizen input today. This is a time provided for our citizens to address the board. They will be addressing issues that are not on our agenda. And if they do have any information with them, part of their presentation that will be asked to be part of our permanent record. So, we do have this morning have Rondo, would you like to come up and you have three minutes?
Thank you.
Is that cutting into my time? Good morning. I just want to ask a couple of quick questions. I've also noticed that in the rounds of campaign seasons, a question seems to always be presented during campaign season, but never really seems to move before or after. My question being is, is there any movement toward having this commission move to a nonpartisan body? And maybe have a five member instead of three member? Just putting it out there, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Rondo.
Thank you.
Are there any others in the audience that would love to say something today, this morning? Okay, we'll go on then with our consent agenda. Are there any items that you want to pull?
Quite a list of items on the consent agenda today, so, yeah, nothing I'm proposing to pull.
For me, that being in Ontario on Monday, I didn't get a chance to, and then meetings yesterday, I didn't get a chance to review the minutes. So, I'd like to pull those for today.
Okay, all right, so.
Sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen.
Okay, so we'll pull items sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. And I would like to pull item four, just because I would like a little bit of clarification on that. So, is there a motion now?
I'd move that we approve the consent agenda as indicated on the agenda with the exceptions of item four, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen.
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
I vote yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So, thank you so much. Yes, item number four.
So, item number four, I believe, is the budget adjustment for statewide transportation improvement funds. This is a pass-through of dollars that we received from the state that the budget adjustment is taking the initial allocation that we received from the state. And we would be passing those dollars through to COIC, who will be executing the STIF projects that the board has reviewed and approved. I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
Okay, my question, when I was looking at the documentation attached, it looks like this transportation charge to all employees is .1% now. But it looks like if you look at the schedule for 2023, it's jumping up a million dollars. It's jumping up from three million in 2020. So, what is the percent then going to be jumping up? Is that part of the legislation?
That's not something that I've been, that I have.
I know, it's.
But I can look into it definitely, and I can reach out to our leads on at ODOT to find out more. Are you looking at which attachment?
I'm looking at Deschutes County.
The table that shows all county?
Right. It's packet page seventy-nine, four B.
Okay, so that's the projection from the state.
And so, when you look at it, yes, for year-end 2020, it says three million forty-nine dollars. But then, when it's for our year 2023, it's over four million. So, either we're going to have a lot more employees here, or the percentage is jumping up. And I just wasn't aware, what is the percentage you're going to be doing?
Okay, I can definitely look into that with ODOT and get back to you with a more detailed answer, for sure.
You know, and what I noticed here, Commissioner Dara, is that the big jump is actually in 2021. It goes up six hundred thousand, and then it goes up about two hundred thousand in 2022 and 2023. So, it's like, there's a big jump there in 2021, so.
And one thing, and I'm not sure that this correlates, but there is discussion about combining the STF and the STIF programs. And I'm not sure if that's why that jump is reflected or not. But again, I'll reach out to our contact at ODOT and get back to the board with more information.
I think that would be great, just so we're aware, because it's, what is, our allocation is seven point, almost seven point six million dollars that we're funding. And this says that we've received three point, you know, over three million. So, anyway, just trying to keep it all in order. Thank you. Thanks, Whitney.
Thank you.
So, I'll move a board signature, resolution number twenty twenty dash zero zero three, budget adjustment for statewide transportation improvement funds.
Is there a second?
And I'll second it.
Any more discussion?
I think it will be interesting to see, not only does it grow, what that growth is, but does the percentage change? Because it's a payroll tax on everybody in the state, so. But that, that's all, my only comment.
I know, I just wanted more information. Commissioner Henderson?
I vote yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you. Okay, we have our first item on our agenda. Ed Keith?
Good morning, Commissioners. Ed Keith, County Forester. First item I have for you this morning is the consideration of the chair's signature for our intent to award the qualified pool for this calendar year. You may recall from previous years, we use a qualified pool of fuel reduction contractors. And we refresh that pool each year per the county code. And basically, the idea behind this pool of contractors is that it helps us expedite smaller projects throughout the year. So, we identify the contractors that are interested in doing this broad range of work that includes various items of fuel reduction, including tree thinning, pruning, brush mowing, chipping, slash removal. They can indicate that they're interested in all of those, or a portion of them. They submit qualifications to me, pass work references, equipment lists, those sorts of things. So, I review those and make sure that they're actually, you know, in this business and qualified to do the work. Then they're placed in the pool for the year. And then, as we have projects that come along, typically in the spring and then again in the fall for fuel reduction within communities, we reach out to those contractors, get specific bids on those projects, and then move forward with contracting those. And so, we could do that in a little bit more expedited manner if we have this pool identified, as opposed to kind of broadly advertising every time we have a smaller contract to move forward with. So, that's the idea of this qualified pool. Depending on a grant that I'm waiting to come in, we have, I'm anticipating that there may be up to around three hundred thousand dollars worth of contracts. That's, we are still waiting on a grant that we applied for a little over a year ago now, that I'm thinking will come in this calendar year. We do have some funding on hand, though, so we definitely will be using this pool, whether or not that grant comes this calendar year or not, so.
How much is that grant for, Ed?
That grant total is for just shy of five hundred thousand dollars. That's a three-year grant. So, that's why just a portion of it I'm forecasting for this year. And then, as we get it awarded, we plan those projects and then implement them.
Are there any other questions?
I have a question. We do this, I think, every year. Are we seeing more people available or less? It seemed like the list used to be longer.
This year, the list is shorter. I have seen it fluctuate, and we really don't necessarily have anybody new on the list this year, although I do hear from people from time to time that are new businesses, and definitely add them to my distribution list. So, we direct mail this, we advertise the bulletin, and place it on the website, so that try to get the word out to people on this. I think it's a reflection of a couple of things. One is that, my impression is that a lot of these contractors are fairly busy already with contracts outside of what they're doing for the county. So, a few of them that have been in the pool for a while decided not to put in this year, just due to other contracts and time commitments that they had. And the other is that the ones that I see renewing are the ones that consistently are more competitive in their bidding with the county as well. So, I've seen a few drop-off that haven't been successful in gaining contracts for probably at least a couple of years, and have decided that they wouldn't put their name forward.
Just real positive, great that we have these pools, these contractors that are out there setting the culture of, what does fuel reduction look like? What is, you know, the open under story and fire resilient landscape look like? So, it's good to have these partners out there.
It's definitely nice to have the workforce. I have talked to people in other places around the country that they're lucky to have one or two contractors to choose from that can do this work. So, it's nice to still have a pretty robust list, even though it is a little bit shorter than previous years.
I'd move chair signature document number two thousand, or twenty twenty dash zero two nine, notice of intent to award qualified pool of fuel reduction contractors.
And I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Well, yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you very much, Ed. It's nice, there are thirteen on the list.
Yes. And I would note that everybody that did apply did get in, so we weren't ruling anybody out, so.
Oh, good.
All right, should I move on to the next item?
Yes, you may.
All right, next item is an update to the Greater Sisters Community Wildfire Protection Plan. You may remember that we have several community wildfire protection plans, actually seven, that cover various portions of the county. We try to keep those updated on kind of a five-year rolling basis. So, we move around the county to update kind of the oldest plan. And those updates basically consist of getting the partners together, including those that sign the document. The organizations that sign the document are actually laid out in the Healthy Forest Restoration Act of 2003. Those are the applicable local government, in this case, both the City Sisters and Deschutes County, as well as the fire districts. In this plan, we actually have three fire districts included. Those are Blackbeet Ranch, Sisters Camp Sherman, and Cloverdale Fire Districts, as well as the state agency responsible for forest management. So, that's Oregon Department of Forestry. Our signatures to the document, we also include the federal partners as well. They're not signatures to the document, we were kind of delivering them the document. The idea of community wildfire protection plans is this is the community informing risks, both on private lands, to try to reduce those risks, but also to help prioritize work on the federal lands that surround the community. And we have seen a lot of work on those federal lands, both in the Greater Sisters area and throughout the county. A lot of those are noted in there. So, with the update, we've noted some of those projects that are moving forward and are planned to move forward with this update in the next five years. Those are noted in the plan, as well as priorities for the next year. That really, the overarching priorities don't change a whole lot, which are, you know, protection of life and property, reducing fire risk, creating defensible space, and creating more resilient landscapes on the federal lands. We did try to incorporate the Sisters Country Vision document into there. And so, that's referenced at a few different points in this document, as those should speak to each other, because one of the priorities of that Sisters Country Vision was really having a more resilient landscape, more resilient community in the face of natural disasters, wildfire being one that's very important to the Sisters area. Another change that's in here is we have used a new tool to conduct the risk assessment. A risk assessment is essentially kind of a required portion of Community Wildfire Protection Plan. Oregon Department of Forestry and Oregon State University came out with a new tool in the last, I guess it's been a year and a half or so now, called the Oregon Wildfire Risk Explorer, where you can essentially use the latest data that's available. And we've used the plan boundary and then can, you know, overlay different data layers to illustrate the risk that's within the plan area. So, that's part of Appendix A. That's about halfway through the document. One other thing that I would note.
Was that, when you say it was a new tool, is that a major change in this new plan, is to add all those pages?
I'd say that's a fairly major change, yeah.
It's interesting to look at those, what it all entails.
Yeah, we, before we used the, there was kind of a framework that was proposed out there by the Oregon Department of Forestry. When we started writing community wildfire protection plans, we'd been using that framework. But this still utilized a lot of the framework, but really uses the most up-to-date data. And they plan to, as new data comes available through, you know, satellite imaging and those sorts of things, keep updating this as a tool. So, I think we'll.
The one page, packet page one forty-four that has all the fire ignitions?
Yeah.
It's amazing. I mean, just in what, eleven years or something, they had that many?
Yes.
Human or lightning-caused?
Yes, sixty percent human cause. So, we do get our fair share of lightning-caused fires, but the human-caused fires that can be prevented and should be prevented are quite a significant portion of those fire starts as well, so. The one other thing I was going to mention that was kind of a, something that was quite a lot of discussion, and it's not just been for this plan, but just especially following some of the fires, including the fire in paradise, was evacuation and evacuation routes and transportation planning. We, in past plans, have kind of addressed at a very high level or very generally. We did add a map in here to kind of identify some primary, secondary, and tertiary transportation routes. I wouldn't call them just evacuation planning. I wouldn't call them just evacuation planning, but transportation routes. Some of those are county and state routes, some of those are Forest Service routes. So they, Forest Service can use that map to try to improve some of those ones that aren't maybe up to par today, that would be maybe a secondary or tertiary route out of places like a Blackbeet Ranch or a crossroads or a toll gate that are surrounded by federal land and have their primary way out, but it may not be the best way out in the case of a particular emergency. So we've worked with the Sheriff's Office to come up, Sheriff's Office actually worked with the County Road Department and Fire Districts to kind of come up with that map. And we plan to do that as we move around. We're now moving on to the Lapine Community Wildfire Protection Plan. As we move around, essentially we'll be kind of linking that transportation plan, come up with one for a whole county that kind of identifies roads that should be maintained and people should be aware of which roads those are so that, you know, they can get out of the place that they live and onto kind of a primary transportation route to get them out of an area of emergency. It's a little bit tricky to plan for evacuation during wildfires because you have to know where the fire is to, you know, to plan an exact route, but definitely calling out those roads as ones that need to either be maintained or be brought up to a standard so that they could be used for that. It was important and something that we incorporated into this plan, so.
With that, that's kind of a higher-level overview of a few of the updates to the plan. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you have, or?
The plan last evening was referred to in the Sisters' quarterly visioning meeting. So Roger Johnson brought it up and we were talking about it. But I do find it fascinating that that 10-year study showed that 60% of the fires were human-caused. That is.
There's some room for improvement there.
Yes, a lot of room for improvements. So, you know, lightning is one thing, but 16, there were very few fires caused by lightning. I mean, it's at the very, very top of that year.
Yeah, yeah, very, very few that year.
So, I know, we need to get the word out.
Yeah.
When I see these documents, they're always so informational, you know, kind of grounding. Okay, this is where we live, this is the environment we live in, these are the plans that we could put in place, personal responsibility in your property, what the federal government is doing. So as I say, for anybody listening or, you know, for us to maybe even get a little bit more proactive about getting the word out, just to take a look at it. You know, there's a link, it's online, it's available. New people moving here to central Oregon, just flipping through this one time will really put some things in perspective for you.
I was interested in the mechanics of how you do the updating. Do you lead the group? It says that everybody got together and started working on it in February, but?
Yeah.
How do you call a meeting of this? How do you get people there and who oversees it?
It typically been convened and meeting planned by the Project Wildfire Coordinator in, you know, with direction of myself and then an overall steering committee, which are essentially the people that sign the document or their representatives. So for example, City of Sisters, Corey Misley as the city administrator, and then Patrick Davenport as their planning director, attended for the city council, who signs it, the mayor signs it. But it's basically that kind of core group that, you know, stays in touch and then is coordinated by our Project Wildfire Coordinator would be now be our Boone as our fire-adapt communities coordinator to kind of make sure those meetings happen and that everybody knows where they're going to be and.
And we have, you're doing Lapine next or currently?
Yeah, we are in the process of doing Lapine. We started that last year, yep.
There's one meeting so far, there's another one scheduled. I'll be attending those meetings also as a Southern Deschutes County resident and commissioner. So we've already seen the Forest Service and Fire Department and city and county, Project Wildfire all at the table.
What, and then one of the areas that doesn't have a Community Wildfire Protection Plan is Bend proper, is that right? The Bend community or the west side of Bend?
Well, Bend is included in the Greater Bend Plan, but to my understanding and talking to personnel at Bend Fire that the city of Bend may write their, may be interested in writing their own plan. And in fact, I think they're discussing that potentially this week or at whatever the next council.
So would they just write about at their property boundaries and then we're right next to them writing about the stuff?
They, that's what I assume. They haven't made that decision entirely yet, so I'm not, I couldn't answer that with any degree of certainty, but my understanding was that they have some interest in other kind of planning and regulatory items that aren't addressed or in the, we've always approached these as kind of a non-regulatory document, really, you know, a planning document, but not anything that commits dollars or regulates anything. And my understanding is that they want to use that, their plan for those purposes within the city of Bend.
Land use or building code or different things like?
Correct, potentially, yeah.
Because it's interesting, I mean, like when we did the transect, that was kind of identified as city land, or ultimately it was going to be city land. They've gave it up as that, and now it's county, but it's right adjacent to city land.
Yeah.
It's interesting.
There's, in the past, and, you know, with this document and with Redmond and Lapine, we tried to involve the city and incorporate as many of their, of the text that's relevant for them in the plan as well. But I've usually stopped short of putting goals in as far as, you know, being, you know, putting maps in that might end up being regulatory for a land use purpose or building purposes.
Ed, I'm just wondering about Deschutes River Woods. I know Nathan was working on evacuation plan that, is that, has that been implemented then?
That's a good question. I couldn't answer that.
I know, I thought he said it was going to be like last July, and I just wondered.
I would suspect that it has, but I couldn't, I couldn't be certain.
I should talk to him then. Okay.
Is, so is Deschutes River Woods and then the, like, Tethro and that area all part of the Greater Bend?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, generally, it doesn't follow the Deschutes Rural Number Two Fire District exactly, but it generally, it does encompass all of Deschutes Rural Fire District Number Two, which is protected by the Bend Fire Department. It goes beyond that because in some cases, you know, we're trying to identify the wildland urban interface, including the federal lands, and the district doesn't include some of those federal lands. So we drew it further out than what the district is, but it does include all the locations that are protected by the city of Bend through the, through an agreement with Deschutes Rural Number Two.
Thank you.
Are we the first entity signing?
Yes. City of Sisters has a city council meeting tonight also, and this is on their agenda.
Yep. Well, I'll move Board Signature Document Number 2020-055, Update to the Greater Sisters Community Wildfire Protection Plan.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. DeBong.
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Commissioner?
Hi, Tom.
Yeah, just perhaps as an add-on item, just yesterday, Ed's finalized the recommended grant awards for that $40,000 that the board made available through the forestry program last year. So I don't know if you want to mention that. We were considering doing a press release just to announce the, kind of the results and, you know, how that spread out.
We did. Just from memory and round numbers, we had a lot of interest in that. You'll probably recall, this is our first time actually putting county dollars out for communities to propose actions for fuel reduction through the grant program. We received 21 applications for a total of $102,500 or so. In the grant application, one of the things I asked them to, the applicant, to describe is the match as well. And you may be interested to hear that within those projects, they, applicants identified just shy of $245,000 worth of match as well. So lots of engagement in terms of both labor from the residents within the communities as well as, in some cases, cash match from, that involve HOA, so the landowners paying into that. Or in one case, actually, a community that included both match from their HOA, labor from their citizens, as well as the citizens paying on a per-lot basis to be involved. So showing a significant amount of investment on their part. So for a fairly, you know, small investment of the $40,000, a fairly good return in investment in the community in reducing risks. And the projects that were proposed were pretty diverse. So some included treatment of common lands, some included kind of door-to-door campaigns, including education, but also kind of curbside chipping and kind of every, everything in between. There's pretty good geography represented. I mean, there's really all portions of the county. We had, you know, a few from South County, several from Sisters, Bend, and the greater Redmond area, not any within the city of Redmond, but the greater Redmond area. So pretty good representation geographically as well. So lots of interest and we're getting the word out so that they can plan to and implement those projects this spring. So thank you for that from communities that have passed along their things. I pass that along to you, that there's a lot of really appreciative people that this is really spurring some, I think, good projects. And of course, when I get some, you know, reports back of what actually got accomplished, I'll bring those back to you so you're aware of.
Great. Yeah, that's, I mean, that's why we targeted that money, was to try to get some activities like that going in the heightened fire environment we're in. So that's great, yeah. It's a lot of interest.
Yeah, definitely.
Excellent news.
Well, let's look for opportunities when some of those projects are happening. I mean, if we can, you know, if I can show up during a workday and a community meeting and kind of celebrate the work getting done, we can really enjoy that. Just explaining to the next person too, how it matters and how if we all work together, we're reducing the risk for ourselves and the community itself.
Exactly, yeah. And we did, you know, look at and encourage projects that included a component of community outreach. So not just that you're going to go do this project, but how are you going to inform the community members? How are you going to get them engaged in, you know, doing a portion of the work that's, you know, that they could do? And, you know, really raising the overall awareness, the community was a portion of many of those projects.
Well, and I can imagine in any community, as soon as the activity starts, there'll be people walking out the front door saying, what's going on? You know, that you didn't connect with originally. So, you know, I'd be available to communicate with them during, you know, a workday or two. We'll try, we'll look for something.
Great.
So other question, you said we put up $40,000, but yet the applications went for $102,500. So you really, did you have, were you able to meet that?
No.
No. No, I mean, so.
We had to reduce, we had to reduce the, so, yeah, we had, I asked Oregon Department of Forestry and a couple of fire districts to sit in with me and review those applications. We came up with some criteria, including whether, you know, a community was organized using like the FireWise model for, you know, they're already organized, so there's a better chance of them being successful. What portion of the project was a match? Did it include the community outreach or not? Was it actually achievable and what was that community's level of risk? So we evaluated all those and then essentially tried to rank them and then, you know, had to obviously reduce several of those requests. But, yeah, yeah. So there's additional opportunity out there for the future, I guess I'd say.
No, I'm just thinking like, okay, so where can we find like some grant to apply for that could help us augment R4, you know, double R40 or whatever? You know? Hopefully there's.
Yeah, if we, not having done this before, didn't have really a good gauge of what kind of requests we get. And so, you know, it was a good exercise to go through to kind of see what kind of requests would be out there and that might inform, you know, future grant opportunities in the, in the next year or so.
Well, this was TRT money, right? Wasn't it?
Lottery, lottery money.
So another option is allocate more of that to this area and less to something else. I mean, that'd be something to think about.
I know. It seems like the match, if they're matching $245,000, that's to $105,000, you know, that's, that would be great. More money.
If, you know, we could look at the balances in that fund, figure out if there's a way to just kind of do the next project, you know, the one that just fell off the list or whatever, because I'm sure there's another group that would be interested in doing it still.
Sure.
Could you provide a list of the next one or two projects that would have qualified?
Sure.
I could.
Yeah, that'd be just a good exercise, see if we could do it.
Right.
I guess now that you were talking about it, it'd be nice just to know what we, you know, we do this discretionary grants for other things. We just did it yesterday on a bunch of things that were, so it'd be interesting to see what you awarded to, what projects, and then who wasn't awarded. And we could look at the lottery funds that we have this year, because sometimes there's variance between what we think we're going to get and what we get. So that might be an opportunity also.
Sure.
That's what you're kind of asking, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, definitely.
Okay.
I can get that information to you.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
So Cody Smith?
Good morning and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Cody Smith, Road Department. The Southwest Canal Boulevard/Southwest Hemholt Way intersection improvement project includes constructing a left turn lane for northbound Southwest Canal Boulevard, modifying the vertical alignment of Southwest Canal Boulevard to improve site distance at the intersection, removing several fixed roadside objects from the clear zone through that corridor, some sign improvements, intersection lighting, and other work. The project was identified in the old Bend-Redmond Highway Road Safety Audit Report that the Road Department and their consultant completed back in 2017. The Board of Commissioners has taken several actions on this project here since then, including adopting the preferred alternative, which is, which is the one we're slated to build here, the purchase of the right-of-way, award of the design contract for the project. Road Department solicited for bids for construction of the project in December. Bids were open December 18th, 2019. Five bids were received. Lowest responsive bid was from High Desert Aggregate and Paving with a total amount of $795,672. So before you this morning is the Notice of Intent to Award for this contract. Approval and issuance of this Notice of Intent to Award will start a one-week period for interested parties to protest the award. If no protests are received during that period, the contract would then be awarded administratively. The total project cost, this includes the engineering, right-of-way purchases, some utility work for the project is $1,8,909 currently. An estimated $672,000 of that cost will be contributed by ODOT through the All Roads Transportation Safety Program. Don't have a schedule from the contractor yet on when the project would start, but assuming the contract's awarded and once we have the contract awarded, the project completion date would be August 31st of 2020.
I recognize this is one of those projects we were talking about in our State of the County and the future projects coming up. And people were, you know, in some of our groups were excited to hear that this improvement was going to be done, so it's good to see it proceeding. A little bit under engineer's estimate.
Right, $15,000 less?
Good. Quite a variation too, $150,000 variation from low to high.
Yeah, we had, yeah, five different bids on this. Fairly good competition here, yeah. I think, I think some of the bidders in the higher end, due to their resources or their things, the project was probably a little more of a stretch for them, but.
Okay.
Well, I'll move approval of Chair Signature Document Number 2020-052, Notice of Intent to Award Contact for the Southwest Canal Boulevard/Southwest Hemholt Way Intersection Improvement Project to High Desert Aggregate and Paving Incorporated.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Have we finished the quarry reroute there?
The Six Corners Intersection Improvement Project is no longer, no longer Six Corners. Yes, that, that project is completed. With one exception is the, the intersection lighting, which is actually being completed by Central Electric Cooperative. And I think they're actually working on that as we speak. So, but yeah, yeah, the...
Just further up the road. It's the turnoff to Ridge, Ridgeview High or?
It'd be south, south of Ridgeview High. So that, that's actually up in the city of Redmond where you're, so just south of that. So, yeah. So Canal Boulevard here, we gets about 5,000 vehicles per day. Hemholtz gets about 2,500 vehicles per day. So fairly busy intersection, just at the south end of Redmond.
No other comments?
No more comments, okay. Commissioner Henderson?
I vote yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. And yes, Six Corners. I do think I need to drive over there.
You haven't done either?
No, I haven't. But I just thought about it, and I just thought, oh, when I go to the quarry feed store, then I can drive up there.
Yeah, yep, absolutely. Go ahead and get out there, take a look at that. But we're pretty happy with that project. So, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Cody. Happy new year. Okay, here we are.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Happy new year. For the record, Peter Gatauski, Deschutes County Planning, joined by Adam Smith, Assistant Legal Counsel. Staff is respectfully requesting the Board re-initiate first reading for Ordinance 2020-001. It pertains to the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act. Adam and I updated the findings after last month's first reading, and we're just being cautious. We are mindful that we have a dedicated or determined opponent. And by having the Board redo first reading, it just eliminates any procedural vulnerabilities that could be raised at the Land Use Board of Appeals. So technically, what you have before you is a comprehensive set of findings that reflect the direction you offered in December. So we apologize that this is somewhat redundant, but we're just trying to armor the burden of proof, the process, the procedures, knowing, or in anticipation that Central Oregon Land Watch will want to contest this at the Land Use Board of Appeals. Second reading is scheduled for January 22nd, so it's just a couple week delay. So that's why both of us are here and making this respectful request.
Commissioner, excuse me, I would further note, as you recall, there were two, Adam Smith, Assistant Legal Counsel, there were two remaining issues that the Board elected or provided staff direction on those two remaining issues. And when we went back and reviewed the findings, we realized we needed to make some changes in the findings to reflect those two changes. Since we were making those changes, we went ahead and bolstered the findings in a couple other key areas. And then since we're, I would characterize, they're, they're pretty minimal, and they're not really changing the direction, or there's nothing individually that's a noteworthy change, but just collectively, there were enough changes that it just warranted the recommendation that we redo first reading.
Well, yeah, and I don't see a problem with this, you know, just getting it kind of stabilized and landed here and getting it back to a first reading is fine.
So I had, let me see if I can find it in here. I was trying to understand in the ordinance, why, what, why there's this word "strike-through" that's stricken through repeatedly? And what, how do you read that then? Language to be deleted in, if you, it looks like you've taken that out, so the sentence doesn't read right? Or, am I quite sure what that means, the strike where it's on every sentence?
You're talking about, Commissioner Henderson, just the sections one through that go on seem somewhat endlessly into?
Yeah, in the ordinance itself, the, the word "strike-through" is stricken through. So does that mean it's no longer there? Or are you just trying to show what a strike-through is?
It's the latter, yeah.
Demonstrative. It's common practice for all of our ordinances when we're amending code to, to show the underlining and then show the strike-through. It doesn't mean that the word struck through is struck through.
Okay. And then the second thing I had was, so this on packet number 200, title and purpose, we have the definition. And this was the definition that we worked through at the last meeting, right? And this is what you've, this was the final wording we came up with?
Correct.
Okay. And that was, we spent a lot of time discussing that because of the, this is where someone would poke holes in it as to what's allowed and what isn't allowed, right?
Yeah, the, the conversation was how comprehensive or permissive is, does you count, does Deschutes County want to, what kind of definition does Deschutes County want to utilize for defining religious institutions and assemblies? And the most, all encompassing, I think, was the approach that the Commission supported. There were two other options as well that were, that were narrower. That's right.
There's another place, I can't remember where I find it. There was a question I had about, it said it could be religious or secular. And it was like, well, how does a secular use relate to a religious, to the Arlopa? Because, do you know where I'm talking about? I can't remember what page it's on.
Yeah, Commissioner, I think you're talking about the additional language in 1888-040. I'm looking at package page, package page 217.
Yes.
Yeah.
This is just the additional language clarifying our existing authority to adopt conditions of approval. And the reason, so this is applicable to both secular and religious assemblies to ensure compliance with Arlopa and the equal terms provision. And that's our consistent practice. It's...
So you're including the word "secular" so that we show that we're giving them the same test because it's in the same sentence, in a sense?
Yes. And again, this is, this is language that we're adding clarifying our existing authority. And so be it a religious or a secular public assembly that is applying for a land use permit in the wildlife area combining zone, we can adopt conditions of approval that are ensuring the purpose of that wildlife area combining zone are maintained.
So aren't, but, but by including the word "secular" there, and public or private, we've, I guess what I'm wondering is, this is really not matching the definition of religious institutions, assemblies. It's kind of a, I'm wondering, I guess, is this creating a new area where someone could come in and say, well, down here under conditional uses of bed and breakfast in, you guys have the right to restrict that if you want, so you should. Or under a playground, community-owned center. You see what I'm saying? By adding the word "secular," are we now creating a new way that people could ask us to regulate things that we really haven't ever used and nobody's brought up that we should use?
I don't know if it's necessarily adding on additional regulatory burden. I think it's relying on the existing provisions in our code to adopt specific conditions of approval. Any condition of approval adopted by the Board needs to be tied to something in a code, some kind of concern that we are already regulating. So my understanding, my interpretation of that additional language is speaking more to conditions of approval, not adopting in a quasi-judicial proceeding a new regulatory burden that otherwise wasn't codified previously.
And I, yeah, I see what you're saying there, that we're not necessarily creating it. I'm, I guess what I'm anticipating is somebody else is going to create it for us. They're going to come in and say, you should use this power to, to not let this stuff happen, and the secular stuff happen in a wildlife combining zone, which we don't really use now, I guess, except for like those massive events where they're all...
I think, yes. I mean, frequently, the commissioners hear testimony, sometimes asking you to deny use that is allowed by the code, or to condition the use when it's not tied to code criteria. I mean...
Well, example would be, you can have a bed and breakfast in, you know, somebody comes in and applies for that, and they're, and because that's a conditional use, it's allowed. But the people that are against it come in and say, well, we're okay with that as long as you only do it three months in the summer, or two months in the winter. In other words, and we'll say, well, how do you, we don't really have authority to limit the time that we can have a bed and breakfast in. And he says, yeah, you do, it's right here. Says you can limit any of this stuff. You can, time, frequency, seasonality.
Commissioner, I would, the way I interpret the provision in this 1888-040, it's where it gives the county the ability to condition approval for duration, frequency, gosh, duration, frequency, seasonality, and total number of outdoor assemblies. I see it for the outdoor assemblies being the, the sensitivity that, you know, the county could contemplate if there was testimony or evidence in the record that showed that there could be wildlife impacts.
I get what you're saying. It's not, so they couldn't condition whether the bed and breakfast in is open?
Right. So you can only operate three nights.
Whether they can play volleyball outside every day or something, or, yeah, okay.
And that is, Commissioner, precisely what occurred with the Shepherd's Field Church land use permit. And I do think you would have had the authority to limit secular outdoor events occurring in a bed and breakfast in the wildlife area combining zone for the same reasons you had the authority to limit the total number of events that were occurring with Shepherd's Field Church.
But wasn't that, it was seen as religious though, Shepherd's Field was, I mean, the activities?
Yes, but I don't think in terms of the purpose of the wildlife area combining zone, it doesn't matter if those limitations are placed on a religious or a secular public assembly. The commissioners have the authority to place conditions of approval to ensure that the, the primary purpose of the wildlife area combining zone is maintained.
Well, I, I get why it's in there for the equal terms part. I just, I worry that we'll create this new thing to wrap around. So, but I, you know, it's not...
I don't know the creating is in. I think it was there implicitly anyway. It would just be maybe pointing a light on it or something.
Yeah, maybe that's it. Yeah, maybe that's it.
And we thought it would, this is why we, I think, one of the reasons why we decided to come back, just to insulate ourselves from any kind of procedural challenges. We had, you know, this provision in code, we, we had, you know, elaborated on how it's incorporated in the code based on compliance with Goal Five. So it's, it isn't, you know, it's a, I think it's a genuine amendment that is acknowledging that Deschutes County is, is in a position to recognize the impacts for outdoor activities, secular or religious. They have that ability, as David noted already, but the fact that it's in, in the code shows a sensitivity to the testimony that has been provided throughout this process. So, you know, we, I would say we, or I elaborated on that provision to the extent that it bolsters our arguments for, you know, how we're trying to comply with Goal Five.
The additional language, it's the history, this additional language was recommended by staff to the Planning Commission in reaction to the Planning Commission's, I would say, concerns. They had a lot more public testimony that was, well, they had a lot more public testimony, period. A fair amount of that public testimony was in support of these proposed amendments, but there was a fair amount of that public testimony that was opposed. And there were several questions from the Planning Commissioners that were suggesting that these changes would allow churches carte blanche, with zero limitation, in the wildlife area combining zone. And we reiterated on several occasions, no, no, they still have to go through the same permitting process. It doesn't mean that there are no limits that can be placed. It doesn't mean that we can't address these issues. So we had developed that language at that time to try and address those concerns that these changes would allow churches carte blanche. Really, again, to reiterate, I believe it's codifying existing authority. I don't believe it's a new grant of authority. I don't think it's changing anything. It's just being, it's making the express authority that the county already has very clear.
Well, I'm supportive of the, of doing a first reading, so should I make a motion to do that? Do you have any comments, Commissioner? Do either of you have any?
I support it.
I would suggest first reading by title only.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I'll move approval of first reading by title only of Ordinance Number 2020-001, Religious Land Use Institutionalized Persons Act.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Is it, is this anticipated to be appealed then? Is that your thinking, it's likely to be appealed?
Yes, I would anticipate it to be appealed.
Well, I'll say my grounds for support, one is that I don't think it's going to be a widely used change. I don't think there's, we're going to all of a sudden have a lot of churches or religious institutions wanting to be out in rural areas. Number two, I think because of Arlopa, they, they clarify something that's been clarified, I think, in, throughout history, is the importance of churches being treated equally. And so that's my support for it, so.
Okay. Commissioner Henderson?
Vote yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
I think we'll see you in two weeks.
She has to read it.
So she does the first reading.
So I read this part right here?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to read an ordinance amending Deschutes County Code Title 18, Deschutes County Zoning Title 19, Ben Urban Area Zoning Ordinance, and Title 23, the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan to Ensure Equal Treatment of Religious Institutions for the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act of 2000.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Is that it? Thank you.
Thank you for being so careful. Yes, we need to go to other items. I believe we're looking at our letter for the DEQ.
Yeah. So Dave drafted this up, and have you each had a chance to look at it?
Yes.
Did you get a chance to look at the stuff sent by the Commissioner? Who was it? Paul Andrews, wasn't it?
Well, Paul sent it, but also it came from originally, didn't it come from Polk County? The original letter came from them. Yes, from Craig Polk.
So what are your thoughts?
Well, so, you know, I'm seeing the letter and understanding that the statement we're making here, I did not know before yesterday when it was mentioned, though. So, I mean, this is coming on quick. But, yeah, if these statements are, you know, responding to what's going on in DEQ, I do support that.
It's a serious issue, designating all the water. It's, yes, I'm, I would be willing and more than able to sign this letter.
I asked Dave briefly about it, and I think Tom too, that did we know this was going on, or were we left out of the process? Because it seemed like the commissioners in Ontario felt like that it would all come as a surprise. It seems like, would you say, Tom, that Chris had been tracking it, but they don't know what that meant?
Well, Chris is heavily involved in the OASIS group, the State Association of Road Directors. So they've had, they had some discussions of it. I found out yesterday. According to Chris, it's, it's less impactful, potentially of a rural change on this side of the mountains where there's far less water, less waterways. But nevertheless, as a group, the OASIS felt that it was premature for DEQ to make this designation without essentially properly vetting it. So their group submitted a letter. But I, yeah, until yesterday, I wasn't aware that, of the issue, or that Chris had been tangentially involved in it.
Well, I kind of would like to put in a third paragraph. I like what Dave's come up with. I kind of like to have something after the first two paragraphs talking about, you know, disappointed that we weren't involved in this, or, I mean, it seemed like we didn't know anything about it. And it seemed like other commissioners, from what we gathered, other commissioners didn't know anything from what, so I'd like some kind of wording around that. I don't know what it would be. And the other thing I was thinking about, Commissioner DeBonne, is remember when we went to that DEQ open house, and Director Whitman was all, you know, he wants to work for all of us, and he wants an open process? And we, I was thinking we could refer to that somehow, that, you know, it was only two years ago that we, you know, went to an open house for DEQ here in Central Oregon, and we thought one of your chief goals was to be, make sure you're paying attention to local needs or whatever, something along those lines. And this seems...
Some of the commissioners.
It seems inconsistent with that or something.
Very much quality commission folks were in the room, too.
Yeah. So, man, the... Yeah, so him and the, so something like that would be kind of, I think, personalized for us that, because we'd gone to that, and... So do you want to try to get those two concepts, and?
Certainly, I can throw something together, and I, I...
I can help you with it in terms of, I like that.
We're disappointed that DEQ failed to reach out directly to county governing bodies, especially in light of your previous representation to us to operate a more transparent and open agency?
Yeah.
Something along those lines.
And you could say the commitment of you and the Commission members we met, or something. Because it was a pretty, it was a nice reception, I mean, we actually got to talk to them quite a bit, that was, you know, I remember it.
Let me read a little bit of this, just verbally, so people that might be watching understand what we're talking about here. So a DEQ's decision to list water bodies throughout the state as water quality impaired without data to support these listings, in order to be scientifically defensible, decisions to list water bodies as impaired, and this is our statement now, must be based on water body specific data and cannot be extrapolated from samples from neighboring waterways or tributaries. So just for people watching, understanding the topic.
Well, and the really troubling thing is they want to list agricultural irrigation, drainage dishes, and other manmade intermittent drainage dishes. I mean, this could be incredibly impactful.
Okay, so, yeah, we can come up with a different version of it, a little bit more. Another paragraph is proposed, I, I support that.
And I support that also.
Did anybody have any thoughts from the fact that the deadline was a couple days ago? And why, did, did Chris have any comments about why there hadn't been more time to? I mean, we're coming in late, but, and maybe we should mention that in the letter, but I don't know, that we were coming in as soon as we knew about it. But should we mention the fact that it's coming in late, because we didn't even know it was coming? What Chris would say about that, anything?
Maybe we should make a call to them, and just say, you know, it was the holidays.
You understand there was an open record period that closed at some date?
Yes, and our letter is coming, our letter is coming.
We're sure you'd like to hear our view.
Yes, you want to hear our opinion.
Okay, good.
So you personally met him, did you, you want to call him? And you want to be the person calling him?
I don't feel very informed, is the only thing.
Yeah, well, that's exactly where I'm at, too, you know, this is coming from other Commissioners, saying that this is a hot issue that hadn't really bubbled up in our county, but now that we're hearing about it, we do want to comment.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not afraid to call him if, once I'm informed. There was a, one of the emails I got, actually had their decision or something, or, but I actually didn't print that out. I printed out the three letters, MOC, OASIS, and, okay.
All right, so we have this. So is there any other items?
Commissioners, we had the Legal Women Voters Proclamation that we brought up yesterday, and whether you'd entertain that for February?
Oh, gosh.
I have an extra copy of...
So the decision is if we're going to put it on our agenda?
Yeah, just a bit of background, that, as you know, the 19th Amendment, giving women the right to vote, the 100-year anniversary is in 2020, in August. County Clerk Nancy Blankenship is planning some celebratory events associated with that anniversary. Separate from that, somewhat related, the Legal Women Voters also has their 100-year anniversary next month, in February of 2020. And they've asked if the Board would be willing to entertain a separate proclamation celebrating that particular anniversary.
So what I would propose is that we just look at the words, make sure it reads the way we want it to read, but then, you know, aim at, at doing that, putting it on our schedule.
Yes.
Yeah, so...
Who, who came up with the words for the, of this product, this draft?
This came from, my understanding, their national organization that was distributed down through the state to locally. We just simply inserted some Deschutes County specific wording into it.
As I say, it can be edited locally also.
Yeah, so I'd, I'd be in favor of looking at that, that aspect of it, in terms of making it comply, you know, I guess, pair with what we, you know, what we see of it here locally, given some research we did yesterday, so. When are they wanting a proclamation?
Next month, in February is their request, which is their actual 100-year anniversary.
Yeah, I'm very supportive of what's been done for women voters and suffrage and that, so.
It's only been 100 years.
Only 100.
Well, no, I remind my granddaughter, when you look at the history of our country, and you go, you know, women have only been voting for 100 years. And not all women 100 years ago wanted to vote, so.
Well, remember, 200, almost 250 years ago, we didn't have republican forms of government even, where people, anybody voted.
Yes.
There were kings and queens, and so the whole thing's pretty new.
Yes, we are a very young country.
All right, so we can work on that at work session?
Okay.
Do I have anything additional?
I was just gonna, just as an FYI, the Board had asked during our discussion yesterday on the legislative priorities, and a letter to be drafted by Jeff Hall and modified by us. Jeff's been in meetings all yesterday afternoon and this morning. He's working on it as quickly as he can with Whitney. We should have a letter for you in the next day or so for you to look at and modify, I'd like, and be able to take with you to Salem next week.
Okay, good.
Two or three judges?
Yes.
We'll just round up to three now.
Well, that's my way, that's the way I think. It's like, like, why ask for one when you really almost need three, so. Wonderful, okay, that sounds great, then. I'm glad he's, they're going to come through with that. Eric, did you have anything?
I don't know, I don't.
Our, does our legal have anything, Dave?
Nothing else.
Okay.
I had one update. We talked a little bit about the, what road district is it, Forest? What's the one? Fall River, Road District. Had a conversation with the current chair, and he did invite us out to, they have a meeting next week on the 14th, if any of you, all of us wanted to go to that, at 11:30, the Center of a Library. And then also an invitation to look, you know, go to the neighborhood. And I said I was going to try to do that, that day, at least the, the visit. And then he brought up the, I guess, an ethics opinion that's been issued, and a district attorney's opinion. I don't know if you have copies of both those?
Those have been forwarded, you can reforward them.
Well, they, did we get them last week, or?
Oh, yes, last week.
Okay, all, so maybe to look at those. But I would, I would like to go out there before I make a further decision. That's what my plan would be.
Okay, so you're saying January 14th, there's a meeting?
Yeah, at 11:30 at the Center of a Library. That's of the special road district. If, he, he just invited us if we wanted to come.
I spoke to Mr. Swanson yesterday. He was interested to see the DA's paragraphs on the request for charges or whatever. So I did forward that to him, and I communicated with John Hummel himself on that topic. In fact, yeah, right before the Public Safety Coordinating Council yesterday, so, hey, we got a topic. And, yeah, so he, he understands that Mr. Swanson has that in his hands also.
Okay, yeah, and he called me after, for talking to you, I think he referred him to me, so, good.
Great. So...
Just, I was on the radio down on the pine this morning, so KNCP, local radio, two, two guys, radio show about 45 minutes, and they were pretty well prepared, just asking about, you know, tariff bond, and marijuana, and budget, and the whole deal, so, real good show this morning.
Okay.
And I, I was on the radio at KBND this morning, so, going for 10 minutes, so, yeah, it was good.
I wasn't on any radio.
But they, he said he got a quote from you yesterday, or talking to you.
Well, yes, I did call him yesterday.
Yeah, in fact, I was, I almost called, and I figured maybe one of you, one of you had. And then we went to our work, or no, Public Safety Coordinating Council, so I didn't get to call him back. So I'm glad you were able to.
Yes, yes, so, okay, great, all right. So the meeting is therefore adjourned?
Okay.